Ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Highland Park City Council in person and virtual regular meeting. Scheduled for today, Monday, February 5th at 7:00 PM. At for opening ceremonies. Opening ceremonies, we are all aware that February is. Black History Month, African American History Month, however you decide to refer to it today, I just want to take a moment to recognize an icon. In Metro Detroit who recently passed, Mr. Alonso Bates. Who was the thought process behind the founding of. The Detroit School for the Gifted and Talented, better known as Bates Academy. He was an amazing man. He affected a lot of lives and the educational system that was provided through Bates Academy. Has not only improved the Detroit Public School System, but it has changed and revolutionized the lives of all the thousands of children. Who attended the school and just want to take a minute to recognize Mr. Bates. And his passing and may God be with him and his family. Madam Deputy Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilman Ashafi.
Here.
Councilwoman Martin.
Here.
Councilwoman Manica.
Here.
Council Proton Robinson.
Present.
Council President Thomas.
Here, thank you very much. Moving on to item three, the approval of the agenda. City Council, you've had an opportunity to review the agenda. At this time, well, we have our council here that has a recommendation for us.
Yes, good evening, Council. We are requesting that number seven. Deal with public works, that those items be removed. There's some dates that need to be corrected. We'll have that prepared for the next meeting.
Okay. Having heard the input of our. When a council, members of. City Council, it is your pleasure on how we proceed on the approval of the agenda.
Council President, I have something I would like to have walked on if possible, please.
Uh, please share with us.
I do have copies for everybody.
You didn't provide it to the legal department?
We object to it. This the only copy you have?
No, ma'am, I have other copies. I have one and a copy for everybody. Oh, yes, I got my response only from a. From Charles and Clark.
You could have passed them out.
I was giving one to him and one to the clerk.
This is a resolution?
Yes, requesting.
Uh, Mr. Ashafi, are you aware that this matter is still in court right now?
Uh, I understand that this matter is closed to the zoning court.
There is an.
Medical, now she does have an opportunity.
It's 21 days.
But this matter is closed.
That puts us at liability. For bringing a walking a resolution on to city council, we already have pending cases for things that members have done. There's still the men's case. This is a resolution. This is a resolution.
It's a resolution for special meaning to discuss the matter.
Okay.
It needs to be discussed.
So can you please provide for me what the item you wanted to walk onto the agenda?
That is item there in your hand, the item that is in your hand is a simple resolution requesting a special meeting to be held. On, on February, uh, 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 in February, on Wednesday, we are requesting a special meeting to be held to simply to discuss the matter. No more.
We, we can't discuss a pending legal matter.
It's not a pending legal matter, Council President, the matter is.
It is, the matter is not closed because the parties in question, this doesn't involve city council, the parties in question have an opportunity to get their day in court. And we have to wait to that after the 21 days, this might be feasible, but it's not legally.
No, 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 uh, uh, according to the court order, the court order makes it clear that we are obligated, the court has ordered, and I quote. That we move forward with fulfilling our responsibilities. According to the charter, the court order made it clear right at the bottom of.
So.
And I have that court order if you like to add.
So, so I don't know how you got a copy of the court order because this is a matter between the treasurer and the plaintiff, I don't know how you got a.
Again, again, the, uh, the treasurer and the plaintiff, the plaintiff also sued the city, so the matter does involve the city as well. It's not a private matter.
Hmm, this is not legally, I'm not putting myself at risk by walking on. Not putting myself at risk by walking this on. After 21 days, correct. I'm not putting myself at risk. Yes, ma'am, miss, miss, uh, excuse me, ladies and gentlemen, the, let me just remind you that the. Question on the floor is relating to the approval of the agenda and nothing else, Miss Manica, please.
Is it possible that legal, can you answer that question? Is this something that we can?
As far, first of all, we object to it because we haven't had an opportunity to review it, and so to present something right now at the meeting. Whether it's up for discussion, it's still a resolution that needs to be either drafted or reviewed by legal. And so when the review doesn't take place necessarily at the meeting, so the context in terms of her having an opportunity to. Uh, you know, file an appeal, I'm not looking directly at the order whether it's after the 21 day timeframe.
Yeah, that's.
Prior to that.
I'm not, I'm not putting my.
Within that period of time.
Not gonna happen. So if that's what, if you want to walk this on, that's, that's completely on you, but this is not something that I'm, it's a violation of the law and I'm not participating in it.
And what violation of the law is the council?
There is still a pending court case, we are not at the 21 day mark, we have no authority to supersede what the court has decided. None of us, and I'm not, we already have a case open with Officer Man, I'm not.
Okay, okay, so Council President, so are you, uh, are you suggesting that we wait until the 21 days is over?
I think if you wait to 21 days, I think if you wait to 21 days, you within your rights.
Wanted on the record that you're suggesting we wait to 21 days until the matter is over.
What, okay, whatever.
Okay, alright. Well, the. Yeah, what happens after the 21 days?
We don't know, the court has to decide.
If I may make the suggestion, we have a meeting on the 20th of February.
Okay.
Allow legal to review this, I'll submit it to, uh, John Clark's office for review. And then we can make that determination as to whether or not it's right after the 21st day, because I believe it was just last week that it was entered. But we do have a council meeting on the 20th, and so let's, you know, move forward on it at that time if they make that suggestion.
Okay.
Because. It's copy of, you mean the John's opinion or you talking about the order? Because if you don't have a copy of the order, Councilman Ashafi had a copy of the order. Are you referring to the order or you referring to the resolution?
Both.
Okay, I'm just receiving a copy of the resolution tonight, I don't believe the legal department had a copy prior to tonight, but I will make sure that is, you know, placed in the hands of the. Did you guys? No, it did not.
So, so it hasn't been received and filed by a clerk, it's, it's not an official document until those things take place, on the 21st day, bring this document back. All those criteria would have been met ideally, to have a discussion under there, but I'm not breaking the law.
I'm not breaking the law. Matter is closed, but okay, I'll wait.
So, uh, the matter on the floor right now is the approval of the agenda, item three. We had a recommendation from the city attorney to remove item seven. So, I'm sorry.
Yes, seven public.
No, the floor is open. We have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Martin for the approval of the agenda, uh, the amending the agenda by removing item seven, do we have a second? We have a second from Councilwoman Manica. The motion is on the floor, Madam Deputy Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilman Ashafi.
Yes.
Councilwoman Martin.
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica.
Yes.
Council Proton Robinson.
No.
Council President Thomas.
Yes, thank you very much, the agenda is approved. For members of the public, if you could please strike item seven from the agenda. That will come at, come to us at a later date, thank you very much. Moving on to item four, the approval of the proposed minutes in person and virtual workshop meeting. December 18th, 2023, City Council, what is your pleasure?
I move to approve the proposed minutes in person and virtual workshop meeting, December 18th, 2023.
Chair, for the second. Madam Deputy Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilman Ashafi.
No.
Councilwoman Martin. Councilwoman Manica.
Yes.
Council Proton Robinson.
No.
Council President Thomas.
Yes, motion carries, moving on to item. To the next item, under item four, it's in person and virtual regular meeting for January 16th, 2024, City Council, what's your pleasure?
I move to approve the proposed minutes for the in person and virtual regular meeting, January 16th, 2024.
Chair offers a second. Madam Deputy Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilman Ashafi.
No.
Councilwoman Martin.
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica.
Yes.
Council Proton Robinson.
No.
Council President Thomas.
Yes, motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to move on to the section of our meeting where we turn the floor over to the city's mayor, Mayor McDonald, if you'd like to take the floor and address the citizens and council. Show opportunity to do so, please.
Citizens of Highland Park, Council. Good evening. Good evening. Uh, I'm gonna get right to it. We are. Starting back up our citizens, uh, uh, coffee and conversation. Please come out on. Wednesday, I mean, next Wednesday, which will be, I think, the 13th, I don't have the relative, but next Wednesday. We're adding nothing, no, nothing, we still there until we get somewhere else. Uh, come out, this is where you have an opportunity to talk to me one on one. All questions, conversations, having said, 10 AM, we're not going to do the 5 PM because of the, uh. Wasn't a lot of participation, so 10 AM we'll start, maybe by summer we'll open back up to 5 PM. Alright, uh. Also, I know why, and let's talk about why you, a lot of you. Let's get right to the water situation. So, I'm going to address that, uh, and then I'm gonna have Damon come up and address it. Great Lakes Water Authority, City of Highland Park and the state of Michigan, shall, that's the word, shall. It didn't say we had to, and we might, we may, it says shall, that means there, that has to happen. Shall into the settlement agreement by January 15th, which we did in December. We did, we wrote it to a, uh, have water rates in 2024. Also, I'm gonna flip over to the other page, these are up here, everything, I'm, I'm giving you all the information, please grab it. So. On the third from the back page, again, I think I highlighted something, but you'll see the highlight. It says Highland Park shall pay a full amount of Lewa's monthly charges pursuant to the terms of any contract between Lewa and HP. What does that mean? Our water rates went up, it was not the water, it was not the sewage, it was the, Damon, help me out, what is it called? I thought it was the ready to serve. Okay, so the waiting to serve part of your bill is what's increased, but if you look at your bill. You're gonna notice that people have been telling me that part, their water use went down, their sewage rate went down. So yes, we had to enter into the agreement, this is part of the agreement to keep the levy off your taxes. Now, what happens if we don't agree, we don't do what has to be done? Well, all of those good things that our councilmen talked about, the governor, uh, did for us, might not happen.
That's right.
That might not happen, all of those good things that went on for us to get some new piping under the ground, pay off the debt, pay off. Um, pay Lewa, therefore, whatever the case may be, might not happen. So, this is not to air anyone, this is a, hell, $50 to $60 a month increase for six months. Versus, on July 1st. Estimated cost, anywhere from $3,000 to $5,000 on your taxes. I want to save your house. I'm trying to save your house. We're not here trying to rip you off the water rates, we're trying to save your house. So, I don't know, you know, what everything is about up here, before I get it, we've been, this happened in. October, when we first started, the rate was increased in December, that's when they voted for it. And it started with this bill. So, if you own your home and you're paying taxes. If you want this levy to end up back on your taxes, then this is not a scare tactic, this is real. The agreement stopped us from putting that levy on your taxes. We have. We have, we're not, we're not in draft yet because we have to have the agreement, they were first, so. So, the governor gave money out to help you pay your bills, if you get in a distress, where you cannot pay your bills, there is funds for that. Go to Thor, go to Wayne Metro, call DHSHS if you have a case. And there is funds to pay for that, I know someone who got a $14,000 bill paid. So please, utilize these resources for the next six months if you're struggling to pay your bill. We, that was one of the deals that they would help you with. Also. In here. Some people seem to think that this was just something that we did, this was something to save you, save your home, save your business. We have businesses that would pay more than $10,000 on their taxes. Or, or, or could be any, to the app, could be more than that depending on how big the bill is. Oh, we're gonna, we can lose all the businesses, because I know I would be able to afford it. I'm not gonna be able to afford $5,000 on my bill. My aunt is not gonna be able to afford $5,000 on her tax, I really helped her pay $50 more on her water bill for six months and to try to help her pay $5,000. So that's what the water increase was about, Damon, is there anything that you can add? I just want to make sure because, oh, the leader sizes. Because I'm finding out some people are saying that they have a different meter size, so their meters, the five eighths inch. But some people said there's a larger in their house.
There might be a handful of three quarter inch with 90, over 95.
Right, so if you're at home and you need to speak to, this, that's the other thing, I'm gonna say this, and I'm gonna say it in the most respectful way that I can say to anyone. Facebook not gonna get your answers, you're not gonna get answers from Facebook. Please, 252, write it down, 313-252-0050, extension 24. If someone has a question about anything related to the executive side, please call, I'm fine, I answered. Councilman, can I, uh, 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 he text me about something?
Mm-hmm.
I text the water department, they took care of it.
I can't lie about that, you definitely did.
So please, you're not gonna get answers on Facebook. All you're gonna get is garbage, and I'm saying it. Because the troops are not there until you come in and investigate. So please, feel free to call me, my person is there, I have two, one is this time, or there, two is the Thursday, the other, please. They take the message, they bring it to me, I either have them call you back or I call you back, if I don't have an answer to it, I, I, I'll let you know, I'll, I'll, at this time. But stop relying on Facebook for your answer. Because most of it is garbage. All I have to say about that, you hear, Johnny.
So, uh, one second, I want to add, if the deal falls through, and the rate goes back. That's something, so right now, the deal is still being negotiated, but that's where the rate is, if it falls through, the rate goes down and we'll, we'll credit you back.
And then you get a letter.
This is, this has been mandated by GLWA, this is not something we wanted to do, if the deal falls through, the rate goes back to what it was, it's credited on whatever amount that you paid. Over this period of time, so I want to let you guys know that.
Also, please let them know that if it does fall through, Lewa has the right to go to court. And say, okay, they didn't do what they were supposed to do, we want the levy put back on, on their taxes. And then we don't have a recourse for that. We can continue to fight, but it doesn't mean that the judge is gonna allow us, so six months, average was what, $50, $50, $60 increase? What is that, $300? Over six months, maybe, depends on how much water, versus $5,000? This, this is where we at.
I mean, how many people, I mean, I can't ask a question, I can't ask a question.
That, that's not a question that I can, and this is their, their.
So, you know, they, they put together a term sheet, said, these are the things that must be done by both parties. If one party is reneging on the terms that are in that sheet, then, then it falls through. That's, so, when, when we had the term sheet, that was like, Highland Park is gonna do this, one of those things, raise the rate, they're gonna, they're gonna credit the bill, there was all these things that were in that, in that deal. If they don't provide, Highland Park is credited in their water and sewer bill, the big bill, and they're reneging on the bill. If we don't, didn't raise the rates, when we had to raise them, you know, we bought it, then the deal falls through, go to trial and then it's, then it's just mayhem, so, you know. We didn't, we got the best that we could get, believe it or not, uh, you know, we, we fought for many years. Uh, and at the end, uh, it was, it was very difficult in the last, last few months, and we're still fighting right now, things are supposed to be resolved, we're still, we're still going back and forth on something that was agreed to and knocked over. Right, here we are in February, going to spring, so, you know, it's, it's, it's never ending, and it's, it's gonna be a fight, and it's gonna continue. So, um, you know, me personally, I, I would like to apologize, and the communication piece was, was not, not good. We got the message, but what happened at the end was they were trying to get the deal done, and there were things that could not be said, we couldn't go out and do the, what in. The, in perfect world, you would do the PR months before the rate hit, and then it would be good, but that's not how that went. I mean, we didn't know how much it was gonna be, we didn't know how much it was gonna put us off, we had no, we had no idea, so we couldn't go out saying things and then have to come back, yeah, so. You know, we, we put some information out, apologized about the communication, it was not the best, I'll be the first one to say it. But I will say, I'm on Facebook, she hits me up, she texting him, she texting me.
As soon as I see it.
Right, and so there's some, what I see is, I, I see some frustration on there, but everybody that she gives me, call, call somebody today, said the bill went up. Well, they, some people, I hadn't told reading the bill, what happened on that particular case is that person hadn't made a payment in three months. And then there was the increase on top of that, so it wasn't a quadrupling of the bill, it was, I didn't understand my bill, and, you know, there's some emotion attached to that, you know, so. I tell her, this is what happened, I went, looked up the account, here's the bill, hadn't made a payment in three months, but the bill only went up $30, it didn't go up $400. But what I'm finding is, is people still, uh, don't understand the bill, after all these years, people, so you have people that even if the rate didn't go, it wasn't increased. Still don't understand how the bill is, is, is made. So you got all these things, but anybody, uh, if they call, somebody called today, steward backed up, had somebody out there less than an hour. I don't even know who the lady is, sent her a picture, sent her the report, here's what we found, like, so, if you, if you do want the answer, please come down and see us. I understand people are frustrated, and you can do whatever you do, I can't, man, they Facebook, do what you do, but if you want answers, and you want to really find out about this, come down and see us, we'll do our best to do that. We know it's not perfect, but the good news is, part of the reason that we're in is for this, is we don't have these meters, right? So it's just a big gray area of what the bill is, so that was part, that was part of the sheet, is get the meters in the ground, so we know, it's, you can't, how are we gonna have a bill that's accurate if we don't know how much water? So we gotta get the meters in the ground, meters don't, can't get in the ground until the end of the year, so that's, that'll be the first time since the plant got shut down that we can actually know how much water was actually used. So then that, that fills into how's the bill calculated, all these other things that we would have information to make decisions, but we don't, we didn't have it, we, we haven't had it since the plant is gone. So that was part of the deal, was like, you know, the state's gonna get like, Councilman Shox said, $5 million, you get the meters in the ground. Meters in the ground, water and sewer, and then we started looking at what's actually being used, and we can go back and negotiate and talk about, well, how, why is the bill this much? It was too much, because now we actually have actual receipts, that's all the stuff that's going on in the background, if you may not know, uh, it's not perfect. Uh, and I, I just urge people to come and talk to us about it, so we can give you much. That's not where I'm at.
That's exactly, uh, what it is, uh, again, Facebook is not your answer. It's not. Because most of the people that are putting stuff out is not putting out factual stuff, and so what has to happen is that we have factual information, you call us, come see us. Those are the, uh, agreements, and the letters, please pay some to your neighbors, if you have seniors in your area, please pay some, drop them off so they can get it, but they are gonna come out to them. Give it out to them, let them know. Starting a panic in the city will cause what is called a flight, and guess what happens with that? Less people means more, we gotta spread those bills across to everybody. So the less people we have, and the more you're gonna pay. We're trying to get people here. And that's just what's going on, so, I appreciate your time, and I can't answer questions now, but you can call, this is their, their meeting, and they will, I will answer any question related. To an administrative side, which is the city, anything that has to do with day to day operations in this, please call, you have a problem with your sewer line, and they check it out, you got a problem with DFW dumping, they gonna pick it up, if they can. Whatever it is that has to do with the day to day operations, please contact me. I don't have a problem with responding. Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much, madam.
Okay, okay, cool, okay.
Okay, thank you very much, ma'am. Okay, this is the section of the agenda where. Citizens have an opportunity to speak on. Any items that appear on the agenda, tonight we have two. We have a community development, item five, a resolution to approve the option to purchase or sale of commercial lot at. 13321 Hamilton, a resolution to approve the option to purchase or sell of a lot at 18 West Grand and eight, and 30 West Grand. And under item six, we have a resolution to accept the justice assistance grant or the JAG grant, do we have citizens who would like to speak on those topics?
Okay, alright.
Yes, sir, please, uh, approach the podium.
Good evening, uh, Nathan Harvey. Business owner and Highland Park resident. I got just two minutes, so I'll make this quick, I just want to reiterate something I've talked about in the past, something that Councilman Ashafi has brought up. Ordinance 20810. Paragraph A. Uh, whenever city vacant lots are no longer required for corporate or public purposes. Except any park or part thereof, except where a park is no longer required on an official master plan. Such vacant lots may be sold or leased upon, upon the affirmative vote of four or more members of the city council. Now that's true, but what kind of lots are we talking about? Lots which are no longer required for corporate or public purposes, well, which lots are those? Uh, the charter defines corporate lots, uh, that are required for corporate or public purposes, section. Section three point three of the charter says, public property. The city shall have power to purchase, appropriate, and own such real estate as may be necessary for public grounds, parks, boulevards, markets, public buildings, public works, and other purposes necessary and convenient for the public good and for the execution of the powers conferred in this charter or by the statutes of this state. Uh, in other words, uh, the lots that are requiring a super majority when they get sold from you guys, the council, are for lots that the city uses for the city's purposes. For instance, the parking lot across the street outside. Or a park. In fact, that's why two oh eight ten talks about parks that are no longer required on the official master plan. That, that's the kind of lot that we're talking about. So, so yes, uh, certain lots require a vote of four members of council. Uh, but those are only for lots that, uh, are for property that the city has used or is using. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other citizens that would like to be heard?
Hi, everybody.
For agenda items only.
No kidding?
Yes, ma'am.
But anyway, um, um, on that public work, what do RFQs mean?
They pulled it off the agenda, ma'am. It's not on the agenda any longer. But RFQ stands for request for quotes.
Request, oh, that's not on the agenda anymore.
You go, ma'am.
Oh, okay, uh, that was my question. Um, can I speak according to what Mr. Damon was saying?
Uh, this is related to an agenda item, ma'am? That, that's, that part is at the end, Ms. Ms. Frye. Be more than welcome to come back and get, get three minutes at the end of the meeting. But this is on the items that are up for vote tonight, under community development and under police.
Okay, and, and what is this flyer showing? The process of what?
Oh, yeah, I, um.
Let's, 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 let's be, let's be clear.
Okay.
I put that out.
Let's, let's be clear. Um, Ms. Frye, I want you to have, I don't, I don't like to interrupt you when you talk. You come every week, I want to give you your respect.
Yes.
I want to make sure that, when, when you come up and talk, I want to be able to give you your full two minutes plus one, so that you can talk about the things that you would like to address. But this one is not, uh, related to agenda items. So if you'll stay with us, then we can get you back here at the end.
Okay, what do the JAG, what is JAG? Justice, uh, can you explain that grant before you get into it, please? Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much.
Good evening, council.
Good evening, sir.
I want to say, um, I hope you guys accept the JAG, the JAG, um, grant, because right here it says, the JAG application process is competitive, rigorous, and highly selective. So that means we're lucky to even been in the position to be selected. So please accept this grant. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much, sir. Any additional citizens who would like to be heard? Seeing no movement to the podium, we'll go ahead and move on into our agenda. Moving on to item five, under community development. Uh, city council, the resolution to approve the option to purchase uh, and sale of commercial lots located at one three three two one Hamilton to the Highland Development Partners LLC. This optionee, uh, should the option to purchase be timely exercised by the optionee? City council, what is your pleasure on item five A?
Move to approve.
I have a motion to approve on the floor from Councilman Ashafi. Do we have support? We have support from Councilwoman Manica. Do we have any discussion on it? Are the parties in question present?
Yes, we, yes, we are, council, uh, president.
Thank you very much. So if there are no questions from council, we'll go ahead and move for a vote. Madam Deputy Kirk, would you please call a roll?
Councilman Ashafi?
Yes.
Councilwoman Martin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica?
Yes.
Council Proton Robinson?
No.
Council President Thomas?
Yes, thank you very much. Motion carries on, again, on item five, under community development. This is the resolution to approve the option to purchase and sale of lots located at eighteen West Grand and thirty West Grand to the Consolidated Utilities LLC. Optionee, should the option to purchase be timely exercised by the optionee? City council, what is your pleasure on item five B?
I move to approve resolution, to approve option to purchase and sell lots located at eighteen West Grand and thirty West Grand.
Chair offers a second. I see no hands.
I have some questions, council.
Okay, I'd like to see your hand. Thank you very much, Mr. Ashafi. And we'll wait, before you get started, is the, uh, is that person present? Thank you very much. Just wanted to get it. Okay, Mr. Ashafi, please, the floor is yours.
Okay, so, um, Mr. Harvey, um, you are correct in your reads uh, of the, uh, of the ordinance, but you missed one major thing. It does not apply for development. This is a development. If it was an individual sale, you are absolutely correct. But when it comes to development, the rules are different. Um, my concern, and I put a sheet out, I don't know if you saw it. I put this sheet out here. Um, I want to make sure that we follow the same process that the previous council had before us, because those are the rules. Okay? And those rules are not subject to alter or waiver. They set the standard. The mayor itself was one of the individuals who set that standard. And we want to honor that standard until they decide to change the rules. So if you can look at that chart, a lot in your proposal is missing. And I really hated that we didn't get an opportunity to table this matter and hopefully have him come back. Now we're forced to vote because everybody has moved it forward. I was about to ask that it be tabled until he can come back and bring us the supporting document. So I'm a little bit concerned about this particular proposal here. Please.
To residents, council, uh, thank you for that, um, concern. So, um, what I suggest, and, you know, hopefully, um, council supports this, is to, um, remove the support and table it so that we can communicate, so I can make sure that you get the documents. Because I did, I did print out copies for you, um, for the same process. And I would like to know what's missing, so we can make sure that everything is in the package and everything is satisfied to the council's specifications.
Yes, sir. I got this off of the city website.
Oh, yeah, I was, I made copies.
Yeah, I, I made. This is the standard.
This is what I was talking to you about last week.
Right, this is the exact standard that I would like to have followed.
Okay.
Step by step. As long as we have this standard.
No problem.
You will always get a yes vote out of it.
No problem.
Director Clyburn, is there a difference between what we just voted on and, and what is up for item? Is there a difference between item A and item B?
So I'm not sure what information is missing that, um, Councilmember Ashafi is talking about. So I would like to know exactly what it, it's the same, I still, option to purchase. Everything is the same. I'm not sure what he's referring to was missing in the package. So before we, you know, take the vote, and I would like to make sure that he has all the information that he needs.
Can you state what's missing? Can you state, hold on, yeah. Can you please state what's missing?
Yeah.
This is the same package that was for the previous purchases. Three times, actually.
Absolutely.
This is his third time.
So what's missing is, one, the financials. Two, site plan report. Three, finance treasurer historic committee report. Four, building department, fire department, police department report. Five, city engineer, city planning, city community economic development report, DPW report, traffic report, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
Okay, thank you for that. So, but by this being an option to purchase, um, we're not down there yet. So this is the option to purchase, which gives, um, the developer time to come up with some of those things. So it gives the developer site control for a certain number, for six months, to do the due diligence, to raise the funds. And what that does for the city is, if the developer is unable to, we keep the deposit and the city, and the property reverse back to the city. So all this does is hold, give the developer site control. So we're not, um, all the way down there yet. So this is not for final approval yet.
Mr. Carlton, you, you, you know, you and I, Mr. Mr. Clyburn, I should say. Sorry for that. Uh, you and I both know that this city has never historically given site control unless every measure on that list has been followed. You have been here, Rodney has been here, uh, 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 a madam mayor has been here. We have never issued site control when something is missing. And I'm not about to start that process now. The moment we open the door and give a break to one person, we have to give a break to everybody. Okay? Now, the difference between the first one and the second one, they spent five years getting theirs together. They had everything in place. And this one was actually done, not under us, it was done under you. So I know everything is there. Mister, uh, 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 Mister Williams, everything is there. My concern is everything is not here on this one. So I'm going to humbly ask that my colleagues pull back their motions, table it, because if we're forced to vote on it, it's going to be a problem.
Okay, may I?
Please.
Okay, so the difference between what happened in the past and now is the option to purchase process, which I believe Attorney, um, Contis presented to council in December. So traditionally, we have not been using the option to purchase procedure. So, uh, in December, the decision was made to go this route. So that's why, you're right. In, in the past, it wouldn't happen, but because of the new process, this option to purchase process, that I was informed that you did get a presentation in December on.
Yeah, but when did we approve that option to purchase? When was that approved by council?
It wasn't, now. So it was present, no, no. So it's not for approval, it's approval for, for each option to purchase. So it was presented to you to explain and outline, give you a chance to answer questions. I wasn't here. So that's just my understanding.
Okay, so they counsel vote on it? Did they tell you that counsel vote on it, approving this route of changing this rule?
So it, it depends on the project. So everybody that comes before the council will necessarily not need the option to purchase. So some may come just with a straight purchase agreement where all of those things will need to be met. But it's on the council. Um, you know, we did change the process to option to purchase to, um, work more with our developers and not give up anything as a city, because this deal holds developers liable to do a due diligence. And we do want to move the city forward, but we don't want to be, uh, we want to make sure we're taking our, you know, consideration. We want to make sure that, that we are protecting ourselves. So this option to purchase helps us protect ourselves, but it also helps us work with developers to help move some of this property so we can develop and bring in new residents, new businesses, and new opportunities, so we can spread these bills and grow. So, um, it's your pleasure, council members.
Okay.
Just a moment, before we move, Director Clyburn, if I could, if I could get your attention to the screen. So this is a development framework. This is the process for redevelopment. First one is site research, secure site control. That's number two. This is the standard procedure that's used in developments all across metro, metropolitan Detroit. Having a development plan? Just a second. I went by phone, let's check. Okay. So here are the steps. You research the site, existing permits. Then you secure site control. That's step two of any development that's happening in the state of Michigan, particularly this happening in metro Detroit. This is step two. First, you have to get site control. The next step after that is assemble the team, architect, contractors, consultants as needed. Then you create a development plan. So before people actually spend money, they have to either purchase the property or get site control from the owner. That's not a new process for Highland Park. That's the standard process in the state of Michigan, in the United States of America. Capital Impact Partners is all across the country. This is not something that I wrote. That, that, we're talking about the standard, I was talking to the CD director. We're talking about the standard process for beginning a development. Step two in that process is securing site control. The other steps that were mentioned, you don't do that. You don't do that until you have site control. You don't go out and spend tens of thousands of dollars if you haven't, don't have an option to purchase or site control from whoever the entity is. That is something for the general public to know. As we sit here, we want to make sure that the information that we put out is accurate. So that document is a document anybody can pull. MEDC has it, the City of Detroit Planning Commission has it. These are the standard procedures. We are not, uh, an anomaly. So that is the process. So Mr., um, uh, Nathan can move forward. He can only move forward with any of the things that were just talked about once he acquires site control. It's impossible, and it doesn't occur like that anywhere else in Wayne County, anywhere else in the state of Michigan, anywhere else in the United States of America. You get site control first, and then you move on to the rest of those steps.
I understand that.
Yeah, Ms. Ms. Manica, you had a comment you wanted to make?
I just was, want to just reiterate, that, and make sure that everybody understood that in order for him, what you've already just said, go ahead and move forward. He needs site control, and you do have that accountability in there after six months.
Right.
If it doesn't happen, what needs to happen, it reverts back to us. Thank you.
Yeah, so.
Just keep that in mind.
Yes, Ms. Martin.
So, okay, so we develop site control, and then if it reverts back, what process are we at at that point?
Well, we're out of nothing. We don't. Yeah, the property reverts, the property reverts back to the city. This is your second time, Mr. Ashafi, go ahead.
So, President, the information that I pulled here comes directly from the city's page. So if this information is incorrect, because I couldn't find it anywhere in the ordinance, and I happened to stumble across it on the city's page along with the application for development. So if, if this is on the city's page, and you're saying that this is incorrect, then we have an issue here all by itself.
I would agree.
Okay, so, so my question is, you said that's the next step. According to this chart, that's not the next step. That step doesn't come back until they come back to council for the second time on the site plan approval.
Let's concede that the city of Highland Park, for a number of years, has been challenged.
So who's right and who's wrong is the question I'm asking. What's going on here?
I don't know if any of us can answer that question right now, but.
Just answered it.
Yeah.
Carlton just gave a, a clear explanation.
As it relates to the website or to the other.
I understand that he gave us a clear explanation, but I have yet to remember or been shown or recall where we voted on those changes.
We have not.
We did not vote on those changes.
No, so, so your question about the website is correct. There are, there are problems with it.
Changes, any changes that are being done is against the rules and the policies of this city.
That's not necessarily true.
Okay, we did not vote on this.
That's inaccurate. This is administrative, this is this community and economic development. We don't have purview.
All right, okay, I'm, I'm, I'm done arguing about it. You may push it forward if you see fit.
So, so we have had comments from everybody on the floor. The, the, the issue has been deliberated. Um, would you like to move, we have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Manica. Ms. Manica, would you like to keep your motion out there for a vote? Um, would you like to move, we have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Manica, Ms. Manica, would you like to keep your motion out there for a vote?
I would like to keep it out there, but I really would, would like to say something else.
Please, ma'am.
Because I think that with, let's move on emotions, let's just breathe for a second. We're at the corner because we've already, we didn't have a workshop, but we've had Mister Harvey at front of us more than once.
Three times.
To explain, it, are you changing anything Mister Harvey from what we looked at before?
Not materially, no.
Okay, so we've had him before as, as if we did a workshop. We've, we've been here three times and talked about it, talked about it. So to me, that's considered at this point, we've done some type of workshop. I understand your point Mister Shafi, what you're looking for, but now for him, if it's according to CED, for him to go any further to give us any of those other things on his paper, he has to have this option to purchase.
Yep, can't go to thunder.
Here's the, here's the other side of that, I guess. You're not gonna purchase a property or purchase anything sometime until you can test it. You gotta be having an option to even buy. You can't just go get car, you gotta have an option to buy the car. You, you understand what I'm saying? And so if he doesn't produce this for us, understand that if he doesn't produce this for us, then in six months, we keep his deposit. Am I correct on that? So we're at a win here, we keep his deposit and the property reverts back and it's not easy more. That means if Mister Don, I don't know, that's his name, wants to come now and say, hey, I want to develop at that same property, then we start this all over again. But in the meantime, he gets this option to show us what he can do and what he can develop for this city.
Ms. Manica? I'm not being, I, I'm not, I'm not being emotional. My concern is simple. If we open this door, we have to open that same door for the next developer that comes through here. If we violate the rules, if we alter the rules, we need to stick to what the previous council has done for the last eight years and what they did before those last eight years. Nothing has changed here. If we, if we break this rule, if we alter this route, we have to alter it for everybody who comes through here. That's what I'm talking about.
True statement, hold on.
That's all I'm saying.
Hold on, hold on, let's keep, let's, let's make sure we keep the issues.
All I'm simply saying is.
What we have not done, what we have not done at all in this city in almost a dozen years is we haven't sold a single piece of property.
That had been set by the previous council.
Opportunities to speak on the floor and I thank you very much. So we have not sold a single piece of property in over 10 years. So we don't have any, we're not breaking or setting any precedent, we haven't done it at all.
So then we just give the other person the option.
We sure did, we sure did, we should did, we just gave somebody else the option to purchase. That did not come three times, this is a person who just showed up.
Okay, so. Okay, 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 so let me make it clear. Okay. The person that we just approved, uh, Mister Williams, I think it's Auburn Williams. He's been working on his project with this city for five years. He's been waiting for site control for over five years. He has all his I's dotted, all his T's crossed, and this was not a project that we put together. Excuse me, I'm still talking. This is not a project that we put together, uh, Ms. Martin, I'm talking to Ms. Martin. This is not a project that we put together, Ms. Martin, this is a project that Carlton and the previous council put together. He's only been waiting on this site control for five years now.
So let's move to the issue that's on the floor, we have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Manica, um, to approve this. The chair has seconded it. The chair has seconded it.
Standing is different.
The chair has seconded it. Do you have any additional questions, Ms. Martin, I wanted to make sure that you had your issues addressed. Okay, so we're gonna move on to call for the roll on this item. Okay, so on community, under community development resolution, it's, uh, item B resolution to approve the option to purchase and sale of lots located at eighteen West Grand and thirty West Grand to the consolidated utilities. LLC optionee should the option to purchase be timely executed by the optionee, Madam Deputy Clerk, would you call the roll?
Councilman Shafi?
No.
Council, Councilwoman Martin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica?
Yes.
Council Proton Robinson?
No.
Council President Thomas?
Yes, motion carries, thank you very much.
Failed, uh, uh, development needs forevote, you know that.
No.
Motion failed.
Motion carries.
It's not approved, it's not approved, it's not approved.
Motion carries.
It's a development, this is not an individual fail.
Six, under police, the resolution to accept the justice assistance grant JAG in the amount of, uh, fifteen thousand nine hundred and nineteen dollars and forty-eight cent from Wayne County. Thank you, Mister Harvey, we're all set.
Uh, I, 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 I need to address Mister.
You could do so afterwards, you could do so afterwards.
Afterwards.
You could do so afterwards.
All right.
You saw afterwards, thank you very much and congratulations, sir. Under item six, police, the resolution to accept the justice, to accept this assistance grant JAG in the amount of fifteen thousand nine hundred and nineteen dollars and forty-eight cents. From Wayne County City Council, what is your pleasure on item six?
I move to pass this resolution to accept the twenty twenty-three JAG grant from Wayne County with questions.
We have a motion on the floor from Council Proton with questions, second from Councilwoman Manica, the floor is yours, Madam Proton.
Can you explain actually what the grant is going to be for?
Yeah, so, um, I, and I might, I'm, I'm gonna answer a question from the audience as well at the same time. So the justice assistant grant, um, basically it can be utilized for the following reasons. For law enforcement programs, prosecution of court programs, prevention, education programs, co- community correction, uh, drug treatment, uh, witness program, crime and victim witness programs, mental health, including mental health courts, drug courts, veterans courts and extreme risk protection orders. So this grant was, um, submitted in partnership with, with Wayne County. And Wayne County is the administrator of our grant, the administrator of our grant funds. So under this project, we, um, opted to use it to continue our FLOC program. And our FLOC program is a, is a license plate reading program. And over the, I just share some statistics with you, over the last thirty days, our FLOC program has been extremely successful since it's been initiated. We've recovered a tremendous amount of basically stolen vehicles and wanted, wanted felons. Um, that includes, you know, sex offenders, all of these different things that have been, um, you know, wanted, people that were wanted, um, in connection to court cases and things like that. But just in the last thirty days, um, our license plate reader read three hundred and seventy-six thousand eight hundred and eighty plates. Out of that, um, sixty-seven searches were conducted and a result of a hundred and eighty-eight, um, hotlish vehicles were discovered. So basically that could be anything from, like I said, stolen vehicles, which is our primary, um, primary function of that. And, um, all the way to, you know, wanted, wanted felons, anyone, you know, kidnapping, if someone kidnapped someone, that, that plate would hit if it was entered into the system. Correct. So the, the program has been very successful, um, not only in our community, but all of our surrounding communities. I know, um, the city of Hamtramck is in the process of getting flock cameras installed in their city as well. And as you know, Detroit, Michigan, uh, you know, the state of Michigan has tons of them on the freeway now. A lot of the communities are going to, going to them, so. I don't want people to think that, you know, this is a big brother monitoring everyone because it's not. If, if your name's not on a wanted list, you're, you're not popping up. We, you know, it's not photographing you, uh, you know, we're not issuing citations. You want us to photograph you and cite, give you citations? Fair enough, we will accommodate you. So basically, all it is, is, is just, uh, to continue our program that we have, which has helped us with wanted vehicles. Uh, in fact, today we had two flock hits alone today. And, and so the program's been successful in my eyes.
So do you have any police training included in this grant?
Pardon me?
Any police training included in this grant?
No, so basically, all this is doing is continuing, uh, a portion of our, our FLOC funding, which is, there is no additional training, it's the same training you would receive in the academy, it's in terms of, um, you know, apprehending a wanted vehicle, most of these resulted felony stops and, and, um, recovery of property.
So some programs was like that in our camp program, you have any more programs?
So we are looking at, um, a couple more programs that we want to, um, put out again with our, um, community events. So this year, we hope to continue that program and have meetings, um, monthly and try and educate the citizens if, if they want to participate and, um, do some fun stuff that, you know, kind of bring, our goal is to bring the police and the community together. Yeah, absolutely. Yep.
Thank you, ma'am, Proton, additional questions? Mister Shafi?
Okay, Chief, I have looked over this extensively and I want to say thank you for answering my call and, uh, and, and you giving me a list of all of the cities that participated in this grant. Uh, I just wanted to say that, um, I've looked at the penalties and the liabilities. I just ask that we, we stay on top of everything.
No, absolutely, we, we.
Yeah, without reporting.
Yeah, we, we, um, we certainly have, you know, grant oversight, most of that's done by Mister Burgess.
Yeah.
Um, but we.
Because according to this right here, Chief, the, the ball is pretty much in that court.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
No, we, we, I mean, there's no side deals, I mean, we're, what the grant's for is what we're spending the money on.
Okay, okay.
There's no blindsiding anybody, nothing like that.
Okay.
Everything's on, you know, on the up and up and we're completely transparent.
Okay, so, all right, thank you, Chief, I appreciate you as always.
Yes, sir.
Additional questions from other members? Seeing none, Madam Deputy Clerk, would you please call the roll on item six?
Councilman Shafi?
Yes.
Councilwoman Martin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica?
Yes.
Council Proton Robinson?
Yes.
Council President Thomas?
Thank you very much, motion carries, ladies and gentlemen, this is, this, thank you very much, Chief.
Thank you, Council.
Chief, Chief, first unanimous voted a nice.
I was gonna say.
First unanimous vote at the night.
So, ladies and gentlemen, we are moving on to the, the section of the agenda for citizens' participation. So citizens are free to come to the podium and speak for two minutes about anything that they choose related to city affairs.
Where did Mister Harvey go?
I will be, um, I, I will be monitoring the timer viciously tonight.
He's still here.
Okay, good.
Okay, ma'am. If you will be kind enough.
My name is Renee Ford, I live on Villavista. So my question, and I need it in layman's term for some of us seniors. If the water rate increase was not improved, could the levy have been reinstated on our taxes, is that what we were saying? Okay, the next question is the, and I'm not sure, the same, the water person, Mister Damon? Mister Damon? I was very offended because I felt that some type of information or paperwork or something should have been in, put in our water bill. Cause you guys sent out a water bill every month, so you could have put like the rug wrap or something in the water bill for some of the seniors that don't make it to the meeting, that don't get the email. So maybe that's what you could do in the next bill. It would be possible for some of us, because my mother gets her mail, she doesn't read it very well, so I have to explain to her. So if you could possibly put some in the email, in the, okay. The next question is Carlton, or Mister Clyburn, you have to forgive me because I'm so used to calling the young people about his first name. What is his position? I mean, I, I mean, we see people standing coming before us.
He's the new Community and Economic Development Director, hired by the city.
So whose job did he?
Mister Higgins.
Okay, so was we ever gonna be notified of that or is that, is that any of our?
That's in the administration.
Oh, that's an administration thing? Okay, next, you said I could contact you to come out and look at the sewers or something? But I just had my basement dug up and I have to have a new permit because my basement flooded, so I will be calling you. But if I could get those questions answered, which you did, so thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you, ma'am. In two minutes flat, Ms. Ford.
Hi, um, I am Lisa Stoloski from Moss Street. Um, and I just wanted, um, to speak to the, uh, site control question. You know, you guys are the city council and, um, if the rules, um, that we have from the past, um, don't really work and, and as a matter of fact, they're, they're not, it's not usual to wait so long to give site control. Um, I, I completely agree, um, wi- with that, um, uh, with what Mister Thomas said. So you guys, uh, can have a workshop and craft new language that would, you know, be a resolution that you could pass sometime in the next couple of months, you know, um, to update. But, but you could do one, you know, and you guys, you guys could together write that language and then update our policies, um, our, our, um, ordinances so that it will be uh, easier for developers to come and, and get site control and do their developments. So I would just like to put that idea out there.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else like to be heard?
Um, Ross from Margie, one fifty-one Waverly. Um, I'm trying to find out if we're not having any, um, marijuana places here. Why is that place on Victor all shined up and ready to go?
It's a great question.
You guys have not decided to work on any ordinances. How, how did that happen? Doesn't the planning commission have to approve it being built and or community development, how does that happen?
It is private property, right?
How did something get up for marijuana in this city when we decided not to do marijuana? Until we can get the grow houses taken care of.
You're correct. Um, the chief would like to address that, we don't. He's still, I heard two minutes.
In regards, in regards to the, all the grow operations that are going on in the city, um, illegal operations, as you say, we are, we are working on addressing, okay? However, there's a process. Um, and some of these things are tied in litigation, so they really can't be discussed all that much. However, I can assure you that the police department is going to enforce the law. And if the council, if it's the council's, uh, privy at some point to make an ordinance that allows it, then the police will go along with that. If at this moment there's not, then the police are gonna go with, with the law. Simple as that. I know that everyone knows where they're at, we're not blind either, we know where they're at. Um, they stick out like sore thumbs, however, some of you who know, there was a process that was followed in the past that resulted in litigation for us and we lost. I refuse to expose the city to any litigation or any civil lawsuits. So I will not do something that is not lawful and force my way into some property illegally. So we will follow the rules, give everyone, you know, their expectations that, that they're entitled to and, and not, um, break the law, simple as that. So I'm asking for you guys to be patient because we're, we're gonna do the, do the right thing. And eventually we're going to address that, you know, all of them. However, um, you know, I know, I hear a lot of stuff on social media and, and all of these other sites where, you know, people are, are asking, why isn't council doing this? Why aren't the police doing this, why isn't city attorney doing this? I, I can tell you there's a process and it's not, we can't just go kicking in people's doors, um, because everyone, everyone has rights.
A lot of money while we waiting on this, they making a whole hell of a lot of questions.
You know what, that, that may be the case, however, um, I'm not in the business of violating people's rights and, and I'm not gonna start today. So we're gonna follow the process and, um, we will, we will address all of this, but it's just gonna take a little bit of time, I just, I need some patience from you guys, please. But I promise you, it's not unforgotten, we're, we're addressing.
Thanks, Chief, for the audible. All right, and thank you to make sure that you got your issues addressed too, Ms. Fry, if you would?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Square, I want to ask you, what is your title in the city? What, what is, what does you do for the city? Yes, I, 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 I really want to know that, what is your title? How long have you been here, how long you gonna be here, what is your title? City administrator.
So back in, uh, twenty fourteen, the last time the city went, slipped into a financial emergency, the state told the city that you gotta hire a professional administrator. They can either run the city or they can help you run the city, two different contracts. And then that time, the city council says, well, we don't want her to run the city, we'll run the city, we got the mayor, we'll run the city. We're gonna get her to help us run the city.
So you helped.
So for nine years, I have been here helping. Now, the city administrator position is under Public Act two forty-three, which is the Emergency Loan Award Act. And in twenty fourteen, the city needed a loan because they had a, uh, one of their, uh, loans, it was called, they had a deal with Fifth Third Bank, it's a pension deal, that is called, that was really, that really triggered the financial emergency because Detroit Water sued them, so they couldn't have any lawsuits at the time, so that triggered a financial emergency. So they needed a loan to get out of that situation. And generally, when you need a loan from the state, you either have emergency manager or in this case, professional administrator. So that's how I got there. And, um, and then there was a long list of things that had to be done to get the city's finances in shape. And, um, there, there were all sorts of things, there, there were things like, uh, elimination of retiring healthcare. At that time, retiring healthcare was costing almost three million dollars a year. Uh, there was, uh, uh, at that time, the city was hit, the water department had basically collapsed and they, the agreement had called for hiring an outside firm to take over billing, uh, city, you know, water department and billing an operation, that happened. There were, it was a whole long list of limitations and things. And that was my job to do those things.
Okay.
And the last thing, and this is important.
Yes.
Last thing on that list was to deal with the water and sewer problem, big major problem that we still have to this day that we're kind of getting close to a resolution, but David said it. This is really a, gonna be an ongoing issue for the city because we all know that we've got to rebuild that system. And, um, I have been here, I have a contract. And I have been here, I have a contract with the city. The city can decide, they terminate me 30 days notice. I can quit 30 days notice. How long am I going to be here? My nephew told me yesterday that in 18 years, I'll be 80 years old.
Okay.
And when he said it, I was like, what? And then I told him how old he was going to be. So he, he told me that I was getting old, and I needed to stay in power of term. But I am, yeah, he said, he said it without me deflating. And, and so I've been here doing all sorts of things for the city. The other law I'm under is Public Act 2, which is the Uniform Budgeting Act. So I'm the person that's supposed to make sure you get the budget done. I'm the person, it's under that act, I'm the chief and administrator of offices. I'm supposed to make sure your finances are audited, and all of your reports that are due to the state and the federal government are done. So there's a technical aspect that we've been here under those two laws. And then there was the long list of things, and the city's supposed to come to me for advice.
Okay, well.
Ms. Fry, you, you, you're at seven minutes right now. She allow explanation? You're at seven minutes right now, Ms. Fry. Everybody else did it in two hands.
My minute.
You're, you're, you're at seven minutes now, Ms. Fry.
And then, how did the situation with Ms. Bibbs come to?
Ms. Bibbs happened before I came to the city.
Ms., Ms. Square, would you, would you mind talking to her after? Sure. We have a meeting here, Ms. Fry.
I am not here to manage politicians.
Okay.
I am here to manage the city's finances.
Okay.
All of the official things that they're supposed to do under public law.
Okay.
Ms. Bibbs is not my business. Recalls are not my business. Who did what appointments, the city can ask me for advisory. I work for the mayor and the council, which is kind of a unique position.
Yes.
That's why I have a good relationship with everybody.
That's good.
But the fact of the matter is, they are free to conduct their business the way they want. Their personal business is their business, and I am not here to manage.
Okay.
So whatever they do, that's on them. So I'm here for the city's finances and not politicians.
The city finances.
Not, not to manage politicians.
But you manage the city money.
Under Public Act or the Uniform Budgeting Act, you can see what the city administrator, chief administrator of office responsibility.
Okay, thank you very much.
But that happened before I came here.
All right.
Thank you.
Good evening, ma'am.
I'm Tammy Stafford, I'm resident of Highland Park. I have a question for every member that's on the city council. As far as the water agreement, do each and every one of you agree with 100% of what the water statement is saying?
No.
Do you agree?
We'll have to answer that during council affairs. That's a long answer.
Okay, well, the reason why I'm saying that is, and I wanted to know, is that from my understanding, there's supposed to be something, the agreement is supposed to be signed or something by the 15th? I mean, do you feel positive enough to sign it? Or do you absolutely disagree with it? And the reason why I'm asking is because there's a lot of homeowners out here who work hard for their houses. Some people's houses are paid for, and some people's houses are not. And they don't want any extra bills because everything going up, but your paycheck. So I'm kind of wondering, where's everybody headed on the city council?
Great question.
She's pregnant, she don't let me go. Between now and next Thursday, which is 15th of February, we got to have a meeting. And we are now. When I say we, I mean, there are five agreements out there. There's the Leewell Water and Sewer, the New Water and Sewer Project, we got to enter into. We don't have our own water plant, we don't have our own sewer. We got to buy water and sewer. That's got to come before the council. We had a scheduled workshop for the 25th of January, but it was canceled. And we were having a hard time getting that to be scheduled, but you're still out. So we've got the actual trust agreement on how the money would be flow. We've got, the state came here, I know we were here that night, but the state came to explain the ACO. That's got to get done, and then the actual settlement, which ties everything together. That's by the 15th. So sometimes, I want everybody to kind of keep their calendars open, because we're going to have a meeting, and I'm trying to get the stuff and all the exhibits to the council so that they have an opportunity to go through it and ask questions. I've been trying to agree with the council, but I'm having a very difficult time. Maybe the city can help us get them to come, because it's easier for them to have questions asked to them and they, because, you know, I'm not legal or anything. And it is a large contract, 20-year contract, you know, run for water and sewer, you know, at this rate without the meter, it's a $100 million contract. So, so that's going to be happening here, kind of maybe Thursday or Monday, because the deadline is next Thursday, and council does not like it all when you bring it up to the second. So just stand by, because there are going to be questions and answers, and all this information. At this point, we're trying to hammer out some issues that we do not have consensus on. And when I say we, I mean the negotiators, our lawyers, their lawyers, attorney general, and all of that. Because we're trying to get the best possible understanding in these contracts so that, you know, I don't, you know, drop dead or retire, and then nobody knows how to interpret them. So, so that's what's going on. We're working on it. So council, any day now, we're trying to get them in here so that we meet the deadline for next Thursday. Now, it got extended from January 15th because we didn't have consensus. Who's going to oversee the money? Well, what money? The money that's coming from the state is, that's their money. The state is going to administer their money. The state does not give money to anybody. You got to get that and be able to show the receipts to get reimbursement and all of that. So that's what happens now. We have to pay, you know, you all pay your bills. Right now, we have a trust, an escrow trust. So when you pay your bill, it goes into a certain account, and then that money is paid from that account to Leewell under the old portal. So there is no money. It's only what you're paying, and what the state supposedly is giving to the city for repairs to the system. And they're not going to be handing that to you so you can go buy whatever you want. So, but anyway, it's coming, next couple of weeks, you know, so just stand by. Look for a special meeting on this. Trying to get everybody in here so that the questions can be answered, and so we can work it out. Because in the long run, it's a win for the city. The best part of the settlement is, we can never take us to court again. They haven't settled, they haven't settled arguments against arbitration. Because we can't fight them anymore. I mean, although we did for 10 years. But they beat us out of us, but we still held on. They have more power. They hired 100 lawyers to defeat us. So it's coming, but it's just a very difficult thing because they're holding on, and we're trying to defend our position, and the states involved, the state has really, the governor really stuck her neck out trying to help this deal because you remember when we were in this room six months ago, almost a year ago, talking about we need about bankruptcy right now? So, you know, that, that really is the reality, is we can't get this resolved because that levy will result in bankruptcy by default. So hopefully, we'll get it done. I think we will, we just got to get closer to consensus. And if we can't get closer, closer to consensus, they just got to come in here and make their argument. So when they come to the city council and the public, ask them questions. It's a regular council meeting. So their contracts will have to be approved at a regular council meeting, just like that. So if they don't want to do a workshop, then they got to come into a regular council meeting.
All right, thank you very much. So we'll move on to the next section of the agenda here, so we don't see anybody else at the podium. Oh, there you go, ma'am. Come on, come on up to the podium. Good evening, thank you so much. Could you state your name for the record?
My name is Tony Bennett. I live on East Grand. My question is, to Ms. Ware, restitution, all the people that owe the city money, do you collect that money? Like Mr. Blackwell, Mr. Davis, and anybody else that owes us money?
Those folks got sued by a state agency. The city did not sue Mr. Black. So we not, we can't collect money from somebody we didn't sue. That's between the attorney general and him. Mr. Davis, that's between, I believe that was the, I don't really know. I don't really know, but we didn't sue, those are not lawsuits that were between the city and those people. We have bad debt, right now, we're suing the, the water factory is suing us because they owe us $1 million in stormwater bill. So that's an active lawsuit that we're in, and we're suing the land banks. Because, you know, they, although the law is changing on them, they're going to probably be divesting a lot of that property because now they got to refund the balances, they just can't keep them. But we have a couple million dollars in bad debt from mostly people who don't pay their bills. We don't even foreclose on, because the county does that. So when you don't pay for your house, and you don't pay your taxes and all that, the county foreposts, not the city. So the city does not maintain a long list of bad debt receivables like that. So, but no, we don't go after people we didn't sue.
Okay, my next question was, all these vacant, big buildings in this city, why haven't we went after those people to tear those buildings down? And then the property on my street is 15 or whatever, East Grand. They tore down, the bricks are still there. You can see the historical building as halfway there and half not there. And kids go to school, and they come that way, and then they have to go to barber school, and anybody could be up in there, and so why hasn't that been completed? And why is this appear on Woodward, looking like it's looking? And why haven't we went after those people to get those monies to tear that mess down? Mr. Miller been dead a long time. School's been gone. We don't got no schools, and then who owns the property where the old high school was?
Where the old high school was?
Where the old high school was up on Woodward? Well, I mean, we own that. I just want to understand, it makes me sad to understand that, that we tore down with the statues and the trophies on the shelf, and you tore down with a brand-new pool they had put in, 90, 10 years old. I'm just asking, the, the building at 15 Ferris, why haven't you made that Chinese man from living in China fix that building up? Or any of the buildings that could make our city look halfway decent, if we is poor? You know, you know, and you're not even helping out the police department, because all that's right behind them and the fire department, all that. Right there on East Grand, all that, you can see that, all them bricks and everything, anybody could be up in there. And I just want to understand, is it fair? And then another question to that man that said he owed it part of the water. The homes were built, can I understand, your home was built in the 70s with a water meter? They said that that was the part of this house. Then you came in and put a water meter this big, this big, inside my home. This big. You took that out. And then I want to know, is that water meter good or bad?
Yes, ma'am. Your time is, I, I would encourage you to, to reach out to the folks from the water department?
You know, because you know why? Because, you know, I call people, and you know what I get? They put you on hold, and then nobody get back with you, and then, and then, you know.
They're here to, to address it. I do appreciate your comments.
Yeah, but I just want to know about Woodward, you know, because.
Yes, ma'am.
Even this building here, you know, you all should be, you should, it should be nicer. You know, I can go buy y'all some blinds.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much. To your point, my mother came here. My parents came here on the first day, and that's all my mother's talking about is the blinds, even to this day. So, there you go. How you doing, sir?
Good, great. Thank you. Good evening, council members. My name's John Jackson, I'm the president at McKenna. We're a community planning and community development company. And we had submitted a proposal to Highland Park last year to help you guys out with your planning and zoning. So I just wanted to stop by, introduce myself. I'm glad to see that you have a community economic development director on staff. That looks like you took Mr. Hinton's place. So I just wanted to come by and say we're happy to work with your new community economic development director, if that's the direction you guys want to go. I wanted to let you know that we have a lot of experience working in mature communities. We work in East Point, Harper Woods, Royal Oak Township, E-course, Inkster, Hamtramck. We're all dealing with a lot of the same challenges Highland Park is. We've also had a lot of success working with the state through MEDC, helping communities get certified with the Redevelopment Ready Program that deals with a lot of issues, again, that you were talking about tonight. Disposition of property, reviewing redevelopment proposals and things like that. So we'd really like to be part of the team, if that's a direction you guys want to go. And one thing in, in closing is, Misha's just put out grants, which you guys might be aware of. It's the Housing Readiness Grant, for up to $50,000 to help communities position themselves with their policies and their ordinances to attract new residents and new residential development in their communities, which, again, sounds like exactly what you guys are interested in. So with that, I just say it's nice to be here and wish you the best.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Any additional citizens that would like to be heard?
How y'all doing? I'm going to be quick. I'm Marcelus Turner. Sorry I haven't been here, because I've been getting some things in order. I just want to say that I do own lots still in this city, even though I'm not a resident. And my family, when they came down from the south, we was actually the first African-Americans actually buy property in Highland Park. My last name coming from the Banks, the Andersons, Turners, et cetera, et cetera. My family moved on to East and West Davidson, but I still have roots here, considering that we couldn't afford to go downtown, and Highland Park was my closest city, pretty much, where it was some type of black economics in the market. I say that to say, as a 30-year-old, a water bill that's 20 years, because I know you did what you could, but 20 years is a little excessive. And realistically, with the economics in this city, how is that going to be done on time, or just making sure that it's not going to be too much of a burden on citizens? Because people are really upset with just a $50 to $100 increase. Also, the gas stations and owners are not aware of what's going on, so when I'm in there, they're just complaining about water bills. Another thing is, I behoove you all, council, to please do background checks and investigate these companies before they come before you. There's a lot of ghost LLCs and nonprofits. When you look on the law, there's no names, or they're pretty much the same people that's been doing the same thing in this city the whole time, that owes water bills and debts, and they're using ghost companies to try to hide what they're doing. So if you continue with provenance, you all are a part of that now, when it comes to the investigation. Also, when it comes to employment, again, what is the process? The website is updated, but it's still policing firefighter. And again, my application has been in here, this city, for almost 10 years for some type of position, and I never got called back. So I will be following up with the mayor, because I'm confused, the HR is usually the one that handles hiring, but I have to go through the administration. And currently, it seems like everybody in the city is the only ones to get hired. And again, I wanted you all to know that is discrimination at this point, and it does push away anybody that wants to invest or move here. I understand it's two minutes. And lastly, overall, you have to look at opportunities moving forward, because y'all agendas is great, but again, you all got 21 days for that treasurer. You all got people talking about what's going on with DTE. It's so many other things, and we're not moving forward, and you cancel two water meetings, and Leewell has a meeting in Warren this weekend. So that's all I'm going to say, but it's just overall, at this point, I've asked, because you all are working, I've asked the city to give you all some staff to help you all with some districts, some volunteers, because you all can't do this by yourself, and it has to be some communication and some materials, because it's, at this point, it's embarrassing. That recall thing, because y'all all about to come, they come after area elected officials. So I have no egg in this battle. Everybody coming after you all.
You have four minutes, sir.
No, I get it, but I'm just letting y'all know, on the record, that was embarrassing. The county looked at y'all embarrassed, and the people that presented that information, each one of them should be investigated also. So I'm going to leave, but everybody in the city should have their paperwork submitted, just like in Detroit.
All right, thank you very much, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Nathan Harvey. Is there anybody here that? Well, first of all, thank you for a positive vote on my development proposal. I appreciate it. But I want to make sure that, as council persons, you all know exactly what is happening. Uh, well, first of all, with the, uh, the option to purchase. And second of all, what two oh eight ten actually does say. Uh, does anybody have any questions about that?
They would have to get that answered during council affairs, we want to be, we have a procedure that we have to follow. We're gonna follow the rules, it's been said before, we should follow the rules with everybody. So, you can pose those questions and then.
Oh, no, 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 no. I'm asking.
And they could probably.
If they have questions of me as someone who was on the agenda tonight, that's, that's what I'm asking. Anybody?
I asked you my questions already.
Thank you. Okay, all right, thanks again.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey. Okay, I don't see anybody else moving towards the podium, so, or do we? One more?
I just got one thing to say, I, I hear him talking about his proposal. But my understanding of it is it had to be a super majority.
That's right.
And three out of five is just a simple majority, it's not a, a super majority, which would have needed four. So, and as you were saying earlier, you didn't want to incur any liability. So, if you move forward, you're incurring liability, which puts the city, there you go, attacking the residents again, was maybe facing another levy from a lawsuit. So I, I say you take time, let him get whatever he needs to get together and come back before you. Because the vote today, it didn't pass. It didn't pass.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Brian Donovan, uh, thank you for all of your work. Uh, I just wanted to say that Stephanie Chang is gonna be at Nandys at ten AM on Friday. Uh, if you want to come out, and I think you were saying, people from Gleewa are gonna be there too? Okay, ten o'clock, Friday morning.
All right. Thank you. All right. Okay, I see no more movement, so we're gonna move into council affairs, starting with the councilman from the district, third district, Mr. Shoppy, the floor is yours.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. You know, I sit here and I fight, I call, I scrape. I do my best to try to move this city forward. And every time we take two steps forward, we take ten steps back, every single time. It's almost to the point where it's embarrassing. It is embarrassing. There is a process here, tonight, this was not followed. And I want to say to my colleagues, you know that what you did was illegal. This particular development, Mr. Harvey, good guy, I like him, solid Highland Parker. But I pointed out the fact that when you break the rules, you open the door to other rules being broken. Now, a precedent has been set. So what happens to the next person who comes in here half cocked, not ready? We have to approve them now, since they're gonna go forward. Oh, no doubt about it, they're going forward, I guarantee you, he will not be back here with any new information. I guarantee you, they're gonna move forward. Just like the young man said right there, we're incurring unnecessary liability. Because the next person who comes through here, if we deny them, there's a lawsuit. There's a lawsuit. Why? Because we set precedent with Mr. Nathan Harvey. The precedent has been set. And this is what I say over and over, you wonder why people outside of Highland Park don't respect you? Because every time they look at you, you're spitting in your own face. It's like you're laying on the ground and spitting in the air and wait for it to come back down. How is the outside world gonna take us seriously if we don't take ourselves seriously? How are we gonna survive if we don't stick to the rules in which we have set in black and white? So much is on our plate, ladies and gentlemen, you have no idea how much is on our plate. From the water, development, the treasurer's office, I know all of you know about that. So much at one time, and all of this couldn't happen at the worst time. But that's the thing about crisis, it always happens at the worst time. It's never a good time, is it? There's a court order that exists telling us to move this city forward. And I'm going to say on the record, that those who violate Judge Hagerty's court order, I will not be a part of it, you will not hold me in contempt of court. He has made it clear that the city is to start the process for interviewing for a new city treasurer. Her last day is the twenty-second of this month. We need to move this process forward as quickly as possible. Before we get ourselves into a predicament that we can't get out of. HP, I love y'all, I don't understand it. I'm not getting it and I'm finding it harder and harder every day to understand it. We gotta do better than what we're doing, we have to follow the rules, we have to follow the process. You have to make them follow the process. They must be made to obey. They're under the impression that they rule you, no, you rule them. They work for you. Every member sitting up here works for you. Nobody up here is autonomous, as much as they like to talk like they're autonomous. They work for you. And you have to band together and make sure that they do things according to the rules. Everybody's talking about litigation. Well, you got some litigation coming tonight. Because you set a precedent here and now you're gonna have to deal with it. I want to ask a quick question of Ms. Square. Ms. Square? I understand that we approved the term sheet and the agreement. It was supposed to be signed by the fifteenth of January. When did we get the extension to move it to the fifteenth of February? When was that extension?
That extension, the attorney general got from the court. So it wasn't something that the parties did. Because it, you know, you got ten cases. And so those cases have status conferences and all of that, we have to report back to the court.
Okay.
So the attorney general has asked the court to allow us, the parties, to work.
Okay, okay, so did the paperwork in which the mayor submitted to the public tonight, with her signature on it, dated the nineteenth of January of this year? Was that term sheet agreement signed on time or was that just something that was recently done?
No, we did a term sheet in October. So remember Judge Ration came in October?
I remember October, yes ma'am.
The council moved it by resolution. We, council cautious through resolution.
Correct.
And that, so we fulfilled our terms, so there were things we had to do. And we did that, one of the things was that we had to increase the rate. But the rate increases contingent on all of the deals.
Okay.
So we progressed on. If it falls through that rate increase, everybody will get their money back.
So the mayor did, okay.
The reason that happened is because we get billed for a previous past period. So when you get your water bill today, it's the last.
Okay, okay, so, so Ms. Square, so, real quick, so the mayor did sign on time, but we got an extension.
Not for the terms, for the court.
For the court.
Because the court has told us that we have to congeal all these deals together to go into court. Because there's a stay on all the cases. So our term sheet and the things we agreed under the date in there. And because everything was supposed to be done by January fifteenth.
Okay.
But Gleewa wasn't ready.
Okay, so Gleewa wasn't ready, so, uh, so the question again is, did we still sign on time with the fifteenth or did we wait?
What we, what we did is already done, it was the court that we had to go in and get an extension from the court.
Okay.
That is, that's separate from what we did with the petition.
Okay.
So we're, we're good, we've done everything that we were supposed to do. As painful as it has been, and it's been painful. And we've done everything because we knew that they were gonna come back and blame us for everything. Punish us for, you know, fighting them and, and, you know, holding on to our old contracts and just for insisting. And so that's why we made sure we did every single thing that we were supposed to do according to those dates that we had. So, we're just waiting for them now, the state came in here and they made their presentation. We probably had that schedule that we, we would have come in.
Okay.
Uh, and, uh, you know, they're just holding on to access to bribe.
Okay, okay, so everything was submitted on time to the state?
Yes.
Okay, everything was submitted, you know, you know, I, I ask those questions because those are the questions that my constituents have been asking me, okay? I've been getting phone calls all week, everybody's worried about this deal falling through in some shape, form, or fashion, and they don't want it to happen, you know what I'm saying?
It's contracts, so it's contracts, so the water sewer contract has to come here, settlement agreement, which is all the contracts. The state's ACA, that's where the money is for the repair of the undergrounds, uh, the trust agreement. All of those contracts get approved by the council. They gotta come to you with those rates, that's why the state came with their ACA. And so that's why we want Gleewa to come with their water sewer. And the trust agreement, they want the trust agreement because they don't trust us to pay the bill without the trust agreement. And so, um, it's coming, hopefully, and I'm not gonna say hopefully, sometime between now and trying to, to get it as soon as possible so council has an opportunity to go through the documents and raise questions, um, and get those questions answered before a final vote because we have to come back to court on the fifteenth.
Okay, okay. All right, HP, I hope I, I hope I gave y'all some valuable information, but again, I want to emphasize, if you care about this city, if you're concerned about your well-being, if you have any inkling of self-preservation, I suggest everybody in this city stand up and fight and ask for accountability of this council. We are the authorized agent, so everything automatically falls back on us. And if we allow them to do so, they'll wrap their anchor around our neck and push us right into the ocean. And I'm not going, I can't swim anyway. Okay, so I'm asking you to stand up and fight for this city. To make this council be accountable to you, they're not autonomous. They're not in charge, you are. And don't let them make you think they're in charge. Thank you, HP.
Ms. Martin?
Hello, good evening. First off, I want to start off in saying, thank you for all of you for being here tonight. Um, being with us through this whole ordeal today. Um, the only thing I want to add today is, one, I feel like two oh eight ten, everybody doesn't seem to be on the same page with that. It seems like there needs to be clarity that's in place. The other thing I want to add to, um, about jobs being posted, um, I am surprised that the new CED director, um, I'm curious if that job was ever like posted and was anybody able to apply? And did we get the best person possible for that position? My next question is, you know, I'm not quite sure about the treasurer, you know, what's going on? Or even if that position has to be posted, I'm curious about that as well. Um, in saying that, um, that's all I have to talk about tonight. And then your question about the contract with Gleewa, it was a great question, that was an awesome question, I would like clarity on that myself also. So I plan to be there at Nandys Friday morning at ten, did I hear that correctly? Yes, I plan to be there because I want some clarity myself on top of that. Um, also, in that being said, that's all I have to say for this evening. I want to say, appreciate you guys, thank you and great night, and I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to Manica.
Thank you.
Thank you ma'am, Ms. Manica.
Hello, everyone, good evening. In regards to your question, I think we can't answer that yet until we have everything in front of us, everything before us. And I am a homeowner, so is my mother, and the rest of my family is here, so it affects me as well. I am a homeowner here as long as I can remember. And so, again, that affects me as well. I think what has happened is a lot of clarity needs to be done and a lot of understanding. Because we get a lot of information from, I said, he said, she said, Facebook said, John don't say, et cetera, versus just the real truths. Now, here's a big one, we've been here for a year and every time I say, you're rushing it. No one agreed. But what you have seen is people with their emotions, et cetera, and they target, we target the wrong things. I keep hearing, I, I think she left already, but she made a great point. To sit down and work on the ordinance, or if there's some things about the charter. But instead, we focused on a lot of other things that caused us a distraction. The water was the biggest thing that we have to really attend with. And in between that, we're still dealing with a bunch of little small things that can be dealt with either in-house or be dealt with at a later time, once we figure out what's happening with the water. But everybody wants what they want right now, and I understand it, that's what kind of world we living, it's a right now kind of thing. Or if you don't answer the way I want you to answer, then it's a problem. But you never stop to say that I didn't look at that right, that I didn't get that information correct. Uh, in regards to, um, the treasurer, there is a process in our charter, it goes down the line of how it goes because she's an elected official. Okay, there's the other thing with, uh, the CED director. Uh, I asked some of those similar questions, my understanding is that's a appointed position. Okay, so that, that's there, I don't have to agree with it, especially if it's appointed. I mean, we have to see what is going to be done for any of those positions. But we spend a lot of time on a lot of whether you want, or anyone want to admit it or not, a lot of I need to get you back. I need to do this, or this is personal, or not taking time to understand and get the real history of what has taken place. And everything that we're dealing with mostly happened before we even took these seats. The unfortunate part is, we're getting a brunt of it, and we're gonna take a lot of that heat. But again, I keep saying the same thing, look around. All honesty, you haven't, we haven't had enough time to sit down and look at a ordinance, redo an ordinance. We can't have a workshop that is, uh, productive. We haven't had a work group. But, God forgive me, you want what you want. I want a whole lot of things too. But I'm not getting them, I'm not getting them either. I look at the same things you look at every single day. I have grandkids that can't go to school. I have people that would love to, you talk about moving, it will cause a flight if we don't get this right with this water. And what you don't understand is the less people we have, the more money you gonna spend. That's like when you go buy some merchandise. You paid a lot of money for some expensive stuff that the other ninety percent of people can't buy. They're not in that, that group, same thing with the water. If we don't have any people here, it doesn't matter, your bill is going to go up. The water department gave a perfect example. A person came saying, hey, my water bill did X, Y, Z, but you forgot to mention that you hadn't paid the bill for three months. That's not, that's like not paying your credit card. You won't pay your credit card for three months when the interest hit, it's gonna look totally different. It's gonna really look different because you multiplying by three and not by one. Guys, stop being distracted by some other stuff. We get the water together and we are working on the buildings, the building department can tell you, I come down there and ask them all the time. Did you check out such and such, did you check out such and such ranch, Oakley, Oakley, or whatever it is? Did you check out such and such? Did you check out such and such ranch? Oak, oak, or whatever it is? But wrong wasn't built in a day. And I don't know if you think Highland Park gonna flip the script in one year, two years. It's not going to happen. I don't care how much you come up here and argue, fuss, or tell us how much we're doing wrong. Guess what? You're doing as much damage too. Because people watching what you say and what you do and how much ammunition you give. I usually don't speak this long, but I guess I'm tired a little bit of the same rigmarole every single other two weeks. And I'm looking at totally the same people. The same people. Nobody else is up here talking to us. Same people. And I'm not mad at you. I love you guys. I see you say hi all the time. Problem is, the rest of you not here, or the rest of you are dealing with it the way you should be dealing with. I get trouble paying bills too. But I'd be doggone if I'm going ask those people. Hey, what happened? Oh, what didn't I do? So maybe some of you should be looking at what you haven't done. No offense. But that's accountability out there too. Because when you want us to be accountable, remember those same people gonna come to your house and say you're not accountable to something on that charter or on that ordinance as well. Believe me, I want everybody up and down who to come outside and clean they stuff. That came out nice. I want flowers like raw low in downtown. But you gotta also do what they do and get. So please, by all means, think about what you're saying. And that goes for us too. That goes for us too. I sit here every week or every other week and, and try to figure out my words and how to help us. But if anything's gonna help us, guess what, guys? We're gonna have to sit amongst each other. I don't care if we have long retreat or work group. Just plain and simple, we have to sit down and fix the ordinance. We can't fix just two ordinance and worry about three because that's what's affecting us. We gotta work on all of them. So if we don't call them out, we might as well start working on one or the other. We need to start working on the business at hand that we were sent here to do in the ordinance and in the charter and let the rest of it take care of itself. Because if it's wrong and we fix it, then it's gonna come out anyway. Ladies and gentlemen, I appreciate your opinion. I even appreciate your star because I can see it. But guess what? You don't have to like me, just respect. And understand I'm gonna do the best for you that I can. But understand this, I've been here over fifty some years. And again, I'm experiencing what you're experiencing, and I am a homeowner. Have a great day.
Thank you, ma'am. Madam Proton?
First, I just wanted to thank everyone for their prayers. My granddaughter came home yesterday.
Yeah.
I love Highland Park. I just have one concern today, I guess, that I really want to speak on, and that's the contract with SafeBuild. I need some answers on that because it was. Can't hear you. The contract with SafeBuild was up in September of twenty twenty-three. So I need some clarity and some information on that. And that's our building inspector, code enforcement. Yeah, Frank Hayward. Anybody here to explain that to me?
Reach out to the mayor's law. I'll relay the information to the mayor.
That's it. I love y'all. Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much. So if I can get you to focus on the screen for just a second. Here's a tool I want to share with the citizens in the city. This website is called Development Tracker Detroit. I'm gonna make it big. It looks big on my little screen here, but I got three layers of glasses here. This Development Tracker is a tool for the city of Detroit. It shows every active development taking place in the city right now. And if you, if I scroll it up, you see this gray area up here? That's us. That's us. There's a half a billion dollars at play right now in the city of Detroit. This is a tool that I was introduced to as a developer, but anybody can use it. I would encourage people to go and look at this website, click on one of these things and get some questions answered about a development, any development. You want to know what's happening on Woodward Avenue? Go to the, go look. New Grace Baptist Church, they're building lofts. What will it tell you about the development? It'll tell me, it'll tell you that the developer Neil Check of Raincheck Development is in Birmingham. He purchased a former building. All right, it'll tell you what it was purchased for, nine hundred thousand dollars. Okay, plans to convert it into fifteen lofts starting February twenty twenty-two. Tools like this can help you color your understanding about the development process. It's very complicated. Okay, for people to get a master's degree in urban planning is two months, I mean, twenty-four months, two years. It's a lot. So we don't expect the citizens to just show up here knowing everything that an urban planner or a developer would know. But there's some resources that you can use to help improve your learning curve. The question that was asked of the young lady in the back, do you agree with the whole water deal with the Great Lakes Water Authority? So I'm gonna make sure I tread lightly because technically, we're still in a mediation process. And as a mediator, you don't screw up the mediation. I'll just say this, about two thousand and change people that live here that own a house. Okay, about two thousand people. And just about everybody else that doesn't own property is, is kind of visiting. So that, the fear of two thousand people, mostly African-American people whose homes were their primary investment, this is where their wealth building is. The prospect of those people and everybody else losing their home was terrifying to me. I didn't just move here. There are eleven people in my family who have lived in Highland Park. There's my household and four other households. Whether y'all know it or not, I moved my family here. So they're here. They're living right here in Highland Park with the rest of us. So what happens to my house happens to their house. I walked into a room with Ms. Square and there was a table long as this space in front of us. And on one side was all the Glee with people, and on the other side was us. Now, if you've ever had sweat on the back of your backside when you sit or stand, you know that that is a feeling of anxiety or stress. Because you know that what you're facing is monumental. We were outgunned big time. And I don't care how many books I read, when they started throwing those documents at me to read, it was overwhelming. It's a lot, a lot of learning, a very steep learning curve in a very short period of time. Do I feel? Do I agree what the outcome was? Hell, yeah, I do. Everybody loves sausages, but nobody wants to know how they're made. And if you saw how they were made, you might become a vegan. It was kind of like that. She's sitting over there real nice and quiet right now, but she got a mouthpiece and a pair of hand wraps in her purse because it was like that. So do I agree with what's happening right now considering the alternative? Yeah. Yeah, I do. Yeah, I do. I'm, I'm ecstatic that we got to this point. I'm ecstatic that we got to this point. So to Ms. Manica's point, most of our constituents are at home. They work today. They take care of their kids or their grandkids. They're tired. They're not participating in government. Um, the vast majority of the eighty-nine hundred people that live in Highland Park are not even paying attention to what's going on in the city council. I run into them up at Glory. I run into them at the gas station. If I'm getting some pizza, I see those people. I've known them for almost twenty years. And some of them still don't even know who the people that are on the city council. Some of them have asked about the former mayor as if they were still mayor. That's just a reality. This is our community that we live in. But rest assured, when I go to Lansing and somebody asks me where I'm from, and I tell them I live in Highland Park, and I tell them I'm the city council president, they go, oh, I might, I got a couple of words for you. Okay, when I'm downtown on the Coleman Young Building? Yeah. When I'm at the McNamara Building, yeah. They're watching. Don't believe nobody is watching. A lot of people are watching. This little three-square-mile piece of real estate is the most valuable real estate in southeastern Michigan because it's standing right in the middle of all those developments that I just showed you. It's a very uncomfortable feeling to be embarrassed about where you live because of the reputation of the way that the government functions in your community. And it didn't start last year. It started in the years preceding the current administration. So it's a rough, rough thing to love the city. You show it through your actions, less so by your words. So don't believe nobody's watching. Uh, last again for Black History Month, I mentioned Alonzo Bates. Uh, those of you who don't know, Alonzo Bates, inspired by Coleman and Young, they started a project in the late nineteen seventies, early nineteen eighties. For those who are not aware, that is when they started to impose special education on black children in cities. And all sorts of fantastic pharmaceutical therapies were tried on children all over America to try and control their behavior. And there was a cry from educators far and wide about why are we focusing all this money on dumbing our children down? What is being done about our gifted children? And there was a discussion that there were no gifted children to even contend with. Alonzo Bates, Herman Henderson, Barbara Rose Collins, Ken Cockrell, Coleman Young, John Conyers, they all felt different. And so in the halls of government in the city of Detroit in the late nineteen seventies, they put together a plan for creating the Detroit School for the Gifted and Talented so that regular urban kids could have exposure to a professional private education. So at Bates Academy, they created a curriculum where students, before they graduated from the eighth grade, learn several languages. They learn rhetoric. They learn debate. They learn critical thinking. Uh, some of the first Apple computers in the state of Michigan were, were at Bates Academy. Uh, students at Bates Academy, band and orchestra placed uh, at the top of the podium on a regular basis. Bates Academy's academic games team is still renowned and revered to this day. And the students from Bates Academy, the first graduating class in nineteen eighty-five, those students matriculated out to Cass Tech, Renaissance, U of D, Liggett, Cranbrook. And they became some of the most prominent individuals in metro Detroit. All for a belief that gifted children need the same education, I mean, the same focus that special needs children, uh, require as well. Uh, Mr. Bates, his funeral service is tomorrow. He is also a very distinguished member of Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity Incorporated. His Omega service was today. And I just wanted to take a time to recognize this man because he changed the lives of more people than you know. If you watched Surviving R. Kelly, the director, Dream Hampton, class of nineteen eighty-five. You watch sports, Elsie Granderson, Rob Beer, Bates alumni. The head of the National Association of Architects, Bates alumni. So I just wanted to make sure that the man gets his flowers. And with that, having concluded all business for the city of Highland Park, the chair will declare tonight's meeting adjourned. Thank you. That is the Detroit, that, the name of that site is Detroit Developer.